Good morning, Camille. Thank you so much for joining us all the way from Ohio. We really appreciate it.
Good morning. Thank you.
And it's wonderful that you can participate in this democratic process via Zoom via Ohio. The miracles of modern technology. So we've got three folks today that are going to ask questions. I'm going to ask you questions. And Linda's going to do some follow ups. And then, let's see, we've got a timekeeper.
That's me.
Yes. And when, when we reach, we're going to tell you at the beginning how long proximal you have. And then Virginia will wave her hand if, when we're nearing the end of the question. So it's a sign to finish up so we can get through all the questions. So thanks again so much for joining us. Tell us first in a three, three minute, three minutes, tell us how long you've lived in Chapel Hill? And why you are running and what present involvement in community experiences and issues that has made would make you a good candidate?
You know, I heard just a little bit, but I read the, the questions before. How long have I lived in Chapel Hill is your question, Julie? And I was trying to turn on my headset and then what was the follow up to that?
Just why you're running, why you're running. Thank you.
Yes, I have been in the area since 2005, moved here from Louisville, Kentucky. Have lived where I currently am for six and a half years and have been in Chapel Hill for a little bit longer than that moved and that was, that was housing issues. So I've been in Chapel Hill, lived in Chapel Hill longer than six and a half years, but continuously for the past six and a half. As to why I'm running, it's because I would like for someone who has experience, lived experience with difficulty with finding housing, secure, safe housing. I want to elevate that voice.
Okay. And would you comment on some of the experiences that might qualify you to be a candidate?
2005. Turkey Farm Road. Mill Nature Preserve. I, having lived here, have been very involved in the community. First, it was through my children. And then as my two youngest went off to college, I looked to see how could I get involved? That was not tied to my children. It wasn't kind of a, an obligatory engagement. It was how can I get more involved with my community of my choice and I have free rein. I've been involved with Piedmont Health Services on their board for several years. I was on the board of several other nonprofits, including one that deals with immigrants and food. One that deals with workplace development and also engaged through the Rotary Club and we're very involved in this community. This particular club that I belong to is not one of the, it's not the largest. Don't think it's the smallest. It's just right for me and all of its members are very involved. That's what spoke to me. Our motto is service above self. My college's motto, non-ministry said minister, said ministry or non-ministry. Oh, I'd be in trouble to serve, not to be served. But we have flipped that. We've also said we need to recognize that there are times that we do need to be served. We try to lead by service, but we also try to acknowledge our vulnerabilities and ask for help. And this is a more recent development amongst the alumni.
Yeah. So we have another question as part of the introductory part. And that is that in recent years, pool development, developer campaign donations have become much more common. And just a straight up question, do you intend to accept campaign donations from developers who do business with the town?
I would welcome it. And I understand I received an email from Charles Humble, who shared with me the breakdown of recent elections. I have to tell you, as a person who does not have deep pockets and also understanding the limitations that the town has set on the amount that can be given to a campaign, 378. I still have not gotten an answer as to that algorithm, but I understand its purpose, which is to not have any one entity give too much and be too much of an influence.
Let me clarify your answer because I wasn't sure I understood it. So really the question is, would you accept donations from developers from out of town that are going to have projects before the town?
Yes. And I said, yes, I would. Now, if it were immediate projects, probably not. But if there are developers with whom I have a relationship, I would. And so I haven't received them, but yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to a mix of housing.
Excuse me, Julie? Yes. How much time did I have for that answer? Because I was trying to clarify why, why I answered the yes or no question.
How are we doing on time, Virginia?
Well, unfortunately, I thought we're going on to the next question. So I so
We'll come back.
No, I think, yeah, okay.
All right. A mix of housing. Please discuss affordable housing needs in our community. And that's just for three minutes and then we'll have some follow ups.
Excellent. So there's a great need of housing across the board. It is not just any one income level, any one group. We are, we are really at need. And I know that you sent to me, Julie, just this morning, a report that came out from the committee. And I just had a chance to just quickly look over it because I had to go back out to my car to get something. But there's a great need and one discussion that comes up from the council recently is the missing middle. Right? We're giving attention to the extremely low, low moderate income. There are policies that are, are trying to be addressed. Some exist, some we wish to exist. But we can't forget about that missing middle and there are young professionals who would like to live here. They get educated here. They can't afford those students who are educated, are educated here can't afford to stay here. I talked with someone who is in housing about this and they said, frankly, what you need is an increase in housing to reduce the burden, the supply and demand. So if we have greater housing, greater units of housing and cross the spectrum, that reduces the, the demand on it. Right now, that's what we're seeing with vehicles, those prices are skyrocketing because there's such a limitation on what's available due to COVID. This existed already in our housing market.
Just a quick follow up. It, it say you, it reduces the demand. You're also saying it reduces the price.
Yes, yes. That's correct. The lower the supply, greater the demand. Of course, the prices can be commanded for more.
Okay, Linda?
Um, what are your suggestions for avoiding the displacement of low and moderate income residents? And for ensuring that additional affordable housing will not be segregated by race or income?
Right. Displacing, we don't have that many low income. And it was low and, and moderate, I'm afraid I don't have
Low and moderate.
Yes, we don't have that many now. Fortunately, the organization with whom I worked, Community Home Trust retains the ownership of the land and that keeps that secure. Those homes, that's only a small segment that addresses that now currently houses those populations. And so we need to look at ways to keep it affordable for those homes to be maintained. And one considerate, one area that I'm thinking of is Northside Neighborhood. Right? We have with the recent, oh, my words, tax implications there. Could be forcing people out. And I actually met someone, I was at an event. It was noted that I had just announced my candidacy and this couple came to me and they're relatively new in the Northside Neighborhood. And he said, I wish people would understand who live there, that the increase in their, and their, I cannot think of this.
The property tax.
Yes, the increase in their property tax, but it's based on what the county does and it's
The assessment.
The assessment, right? The assessment. He said, you know, that's actually very good for us. And shouldn't be, shouldn't be rejected. And I said, but do you understand that that assessment causes the tax implications for that? He goes, yes, but the resale value. So there is a lack of understanding. I don't think there was a lack of compassion on this person. I think, okay. So sorry.
You're right. How might conditional zoning be used effectively by the town council to further the goals of providing a mix of housing for all incomes?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with conditional zoning?
I would love for you to expand on that and I'll
So recently, the state legislature, thanks to certain lobby groups, changed the rules and conditional zoning is now required for most projects that in order to get a permit. And so the special use permit is now gone. And so that provides more flexibility. And so that's the question. How might zoning, conditional zoning be used effectively by the town council to provide a mix of housing?
Right. I was just talking with Amy Ryan about this not long ago and and I was trying to understand what project that's been proposed. And because I don't have a firm grasp, I'm going to tell you that I'm, I'm clearly hypothesizing here about that. But the conditional zoning, I imagine could be used to work with the developer on, if you create what we've had with those who are selling their units now, that's what I understand what's been in place for quite some time. Then we require this and setting up those requirements with the developers. What, I'm not being very clear this morning, but what I would like to do is for this town to be very clear with developers, what our goals are and what the, the expectations are and what the guidelines are so that that can be addressed at, at the forefront.
Okay, moving on. The next question deals with the economy, building a strong economy, which is of course important. And so there are four short questions here. Most of them are two minutes, but first one is three. So this is an important one to us. Has the form-based code as implemented in Chapel Hill's Blue Hill District strengthened our economy and how or how not?
Right. It has. I have not been able to ascertain that from the information there. So this is purely anecdotal, meaning I would like to look at the stats there. I did talk with Dwight Basset about the impact. This was before I had access to your questions about the impact of students attending. And he said, there were only two students that came from the Berkshires. That was one, you know, that, that residence. But as far as economic impact, I see far more activity, again anecdotal. I see far more activity happening in that area in the commercial way.
Some specifics on that, please.
Certainly. So the, despite COVID, I have still seen an increase in the parking lots in the stores where I am. I have seen, which actually surprised me how active it's been. Right there, there's the casual pint. I've noticed that that attracts people, those new stores that are, are there. And then I have seen people walking from, I think that's the Elliott, coming in, walking to the, the commercial area there. And one thing that I heard from my daughter, please know that I do look beyond my household, but one thing that I heard from my daughter was, she said, I feel very fortunate to be here because I can access these. She is 26 and she likes the idea of being able to get it from one place where she spends money to another and that they're complementary places.
Living in one of the apartment complexes there?
What's that now?
She's living in one of the parts.
No, she actually lives with me. We're off of her on a run road. Yes. And so it's walk. Okay. Right. And so it's very walkable. We can take two ways, Booker Creek or down Dobbins to get to.
Right. So here's another question. What are your ideas for how town council might direct the use of, let's see, now wait a minute, I'm getting on the wrong question. I'm so sorry.
That's a follow up for me.
I'm sorry. All right. This is a question having to do with the economy. Let's stay on, on track here. The UNC Chapel Hill Housing Report is out and it was presented to the council and it's getting a lot of attention. Do you have, have you had time to gather any lessons from that study, Camille?
I have not. And was that the portion that was included in what you sent this morning? So when I looked at that, just briefly, one thing that I noticed was it confirmed what has been stated that there's a great demand. The, in the 2000s, 2000s, we had, I was just trying to think, 2000s and 2010s, think 2010s, we've seen more growth with the rentals. If that is correct, but student population, I think, has gone up 10% as far as what's here. And I'll tell you, when I joined Community Home Trust in 2014, one thing that I heard from Robert as we were meeting with folks was that it was easier for developers. And I asked Robert this again, not long ago, Robert Dowling. Do you think that still holds true? Did I recall correctly those conversations that it was easier for them to get a loan, a commercial loan to develop apartments than it was condos because they were going for density?
Correct.
And it was, yeah. And he said that it was. And so I see why it's driving that. But what I, what I gleaned from my quick scan of what you shared this morning is, again, we need housing, period. We don't need the high-end housing, but we've got to figure out a way to, to recruit developers who are willing to build for these lower income households. And when I say lower, I mean not. Thank you, Virginia.
And then there's another question about your view about residential housing. And we have lots of it, as the report pointed out. And so what is your understanding about the cost of building residential or proving residential as a trade-off between what the cost of the town to provide services?
Right. Well, I looked at that quickly, but what I did get to look at a little bit more deeply was what you had shared with me, Julie, right after our first meeting. And that was helpful. Of all of the costs that go into supporting a household, we don't get the offset that the commercial would, that it's actually a greater cost to the town. And that is one of the reasons why my platform, and I didn't share this in the beginning, I'll do it quickly. I want to increase housing that's affordable to more people. I want to bolster economic development because we can't do the first one. We cannot achieve that if we don't bolster that economic development, which means having more businesses have that.
Okay. All right. Now we're moving on to green infrastructure and
Julie, excuse me, but I don't think you finished all of the questions under a strong economy.
Well, there is conditional zoning one. I, I'm happy to go back to it. I was going to kind of skip ahead on it, but I'm glad to go ahead.
Want to try to keep them all the same.
All right. So how might conditional zoning and other policies be used to support locally owned businesses?
Right. Having talked with Dwight about supporting local businesses, because I am concerned, it's one thing to help them open their doors. It's another thing to keep them operating. And so I was looking at not this, but another proposal that the task force or the group that have been working on this put forth in ensuring that there is, there are funds to support this, to support the, the businesses, helping them to, this is in conversation, helping those businesses to not just sustain, but also have a growth plan if they wish, that there be resources, not just funding, but resources for them to, to really develop as institutions of commerce.
You're talking about town resources, correct?
Yes, I am.
Out of that office, there should be some kind of fund to help small businesses. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes. And also resources to, we're really helping them to understand for small businesses, there's a small business association, helping them to connect with support services that they can use to develop their businesses and grow if they wish. But having, okay.
So now we're moving on to green infrastructure. So what are your priorities? And this is a big question. So you only have three minutes, but just give us thoughts. What are your priorities for green infrastructure for the town? And here are some of the things that would be covered by green infrastructure, parks, tree canopy, transit, stormwater control, greenways and green spaces.
Right. We do need that plan. We do need to have green spaces throughout the town. In short, and Bill Webster, before he retired, was working on a plan for parks and more. And he actually will be here this weekend for the wedding. I know he was very proud of that and we need to look because green spaces also can attract development. And so being mindful of that, I was the executive director of Durham Central Park, helped to secure funding for the second phase of the pavilion, oversaw the construction of it in its entirety. And what we did was we restored the space that was urban wasteland. It became a gathering place for people in the city. And so it can't be, it can't be missed, dismissed that green spaces can attract. There has to be a balance though. And so I believe that if, I'm not hearing a clear vision of how we're going to use our green space as well as our development. I'm, I'm seeing pocket here, pocket here as we address it. But I think if we talk about those, the development and the green space, the greenway corridors, how do people get safely on their bicycles? The great, yes. How do we do that? And for me, there's a lot more research that needs to be done, but I think that there needs to be, they go hand in hand.
So Linda, you have a follow up to that, right on that subject?
What are your ideas for how town council might direct the use of open tracts of land such as Legion Road, East Town, Green Track, J Street?
Right. Looking at the backdrop of our needs, right? We have to look, what are our goals as a town? It is clear everyone, the, the number one issue seems to be affordable housing. That actually is my number one issue, but that's not the only issue. Economic development is another. Transportation is another. Honoring green space as we address all of these needs to be considered as well. So identifying what our needs are, what are our priorities for these goals? And looking at all of these spaces, these open tracts of land that we have this green space and seeing if we do this, what is the cost for these others? Because whatever choice we make, it's going to be at the expense of something else. And we need to be clear about what we want and how does each, before we get to piece by piece, but we look at it as the full diet, the full meal that we have unconsumed with food. I like a rich, diverse plate. I'm not going to be healthy off of one, one source. We're not going to be a healthy community if we just look at affordable housing. First of all, it's not possible. I know that. We're not going to be, okay.
Um, how might the town's climate action plan be revised to address short-term achievable goals? Give an example.
Okay. Well, as there has been construction and there are other proposals for construction that removes trees or have removed trees. And I have seen Molly's measurements. She shared them, I think on Facebook. We're now friends on Facebook and she's taking the temperature readings. All right, that's done. Those trees have been cut. So what else do we do? And that goes back to honoring the green space. If we remove that, how are we going to provide cooling systems? Filtration systems that are, are greenery provides naturally. Short term, are we investigating the, the shades in more public areas? I have seen private, commercial businesses use those, but we need to look at ways to provide that, which is as a rest, but, but yes, also planting more trees and it's very easy, challenging that we need to be creative of how to retain our tree canopy while also developing. That is, that is definitely going to be a tension point.
Okay. And one more question, two minutes. What pedestrian and bike improvements would you prioritize?
Okay. There, the, I understand that there is funding for this, but the North South, this is not the correct name. MLK. I know that is extremely dangerous for bicyclists to travel that corridor. And there are people who have told me that they would like to. And there are
Which corridor again?
The MLK.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And I know that there are plans that the state will be working on that, but the money is not available at this time. I won't get into that. But that is, we have, we have trails, greenway trails that people would love to continue to ride their bicycles on, but they reach points where they can't not safely. I saw a child yesterday ride her bicycle, not walk it, but ride her bicycle from East Gate. She crossed, she crossed Franklin and I thought she was going to go Booker Creek, but she went up the side there. We need to have more safe, like that cross, crossways for people. That connectivity needs to be, needs to occur.
Okay. So the, another question is dealing with public engagement, but the first question really has to do with town planning. And so the town council staff have had many outreach planning exercises. You know, could name them all off, you know, 2020 Comprehensive Plan, Central West, Ephesus Forum and so on. And they've adopted town plans as a result of all that public engagement that occurred. So how would you be guided by these plans as you make land use decisions?
Right. So that should be something that we reference. One thing that I think also needs to happen is communication so that we can have a a broad representation of the community at those meetings, but we've already captured that. And we need to refer to them frequently. Even if we distill the Even if we distill the information from those meetings, and I believe that they, they are attempting to do this, but it's almost as though it gets captured and then lost, you know, trying to. It's like my, my personal filing system, when I first started, I put things away and then there's no real system. It's tucked away safely. Now, we need to really make it accessible for people to find that information, especially our policymakers, especially our council members, to be able to refer back to that. With the turnover that we have, and I think it's great. I'm not saying there's not the institutional history, the memory of how decisions were made. And I think that that is something that should be referred to. This is what, this is what the town, the people of the town have said. Is it time to revisit it? Is it so old? Then yes, but I think that we do need to refer to those. And we need to have a online system that's easy to access it on the website.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
How will you handle citizen requests and comments? What efforts will you make to increase public engagement, especially with marginalized communities to meet the needs of residents?
Right, first of all, open, I am extremely curious and want to know. One thing that I was accused of when I launched my campaign was, we don't know what you stand for. And I said, three things, but I really want to hear from you, because those three things were important to me. I needed to get it, an idea of what was important to the community. We do need to listen, and how do we get them engaged, especially those who are, have been disenfranchised minority? We need to put some effort into it, just like I do on boards. In business, you have to, you have to extend yourself even more. If you see that there is a group not, not participating, you need to exert more. So as the town, if I were a town council member, I would look at ways of how to engage them. If we have to go to them, then we have to go to them, because they have to feel that trust that they are truly desired to give input. So being extremely active and going, we cannot tuck these communities behind trees and leave them there.
I, I, I know this is something that is important, and the town has talked about it. But how practically could we do that? I mean, would you see it as your job as a council member to do that? To chat to this community, I mean, who's going to do, who's going to do the work of reaching out? Question is, because right now, we have, we don't have enough planners to cover the work right now.
We're going to have to prioritize, and yes, I would be very happy to, as a town council member, to engage. But I think that we need to reprioritize and dedicate hours staffing to that. We've identified, we continue to identify this as a, an issue. Communication as well as reaching these, these groups. So if we're in agreement, then we need to show it with our budget, which means to reprioritize. Thank you.
Okay, and then the final question, and then we're gonna, maybe if you have a few extra minutes, Camille, we might ask follow ups, because we got kind of a late start. So let me ask you for an example of a town council decision that you agreed with, and then I'm going to ask you for one that you disagreed with. And so explain why you agreed with this decision.
All right, one that I believe was extremely charged, and I came into it, and it's what compelled me to run, was the 1,200 MLK development. And it is because those 73, I believe it was 73 households that are back there, those individuals own their structures, most if not all own those structures, they don't own that land. And what I understood, and I have to say that I am confident, I don't have all of the information that the council had. So I'm going based on my limited information. But what I understood was that the council had managed to negotiate, had managed to secure the the year long leases, the cap on the free year before the rent could be increased, and also the 15 year agreement to keep that as a mobile home park. So the developer wouldn't do it now and then we kick them out. The.
So you agreed with that decision?
I did, I did, because the, we did not, we didn't have a, a plan B for those folks if they had to leave. It's not as though they could move those, those homes to another location. Mobile homes are not a sustainable, affordable housing option, in my opinion, not the ones that reside there. And so that, that less than ideal situation that they had, I agreed with that vote.
Okay, and then would you give an example of one you disagreed with and why, and how you would have handled it?
Great, and that one is much tougher. And I just got a phone call about this and also attended Monday night's town hall meeting. And yes, knowing what we know now, you know, that had been the Booker Creek, the more recent one, the one that is being protested right now of stop, don't tear down, that's the trail that I walk. When I do a, a concrete trail, I prefer the rocks and roots, and anyway.
So this is one opposite of Old Forest Creek there on the south side? Is that what you're speaking of, the?
I'm, I'm talking about the one that they have reprioritized and they wanted to move on right soon, but we, the community addressed it, and so there's been a pause put on that. But it's part of a larger plan, the six basins, stormwater basins. What I understand, and someone said to me, they didn't review it completely. And I couldn't speak to that, because I have not seen those meetings. And, and talked with someone, and when this reprioritization happened, there was the confidence in the previous administration, the one that passed the, the full spectrum, and thinking, okay, we're just reprioritizing, not understanding what the impact would be. And so it's very easy for me to say, this is what I would have done. But now that I've seen what they, you know, what they fell to of not thoroughly reading that, it's very easy for me to armchair, you know, quarterback and say, read, read that through. So yes, those implications, if that, if something is being proposed like that. And Alan Boyne, so I talked with him, this is another thing that goes into this. I asked him, how do you make decisions? He said, first, I look to see if it fits with what I shared with the community are my goals. B, I look to see what the costs are, who gets, because there's, there are always costs. And I said, that's what I believe. And he goes, and three, how can we mitigate those, those harms done or those to that group? Is it possible? What can we do? And so it's not just what do we gain, it's what is at risk? And I don't think that what's at risk was thoroughly examined, you know?
But there was no cost benefit analysis at all of the value of keeping a lot of trees, which were all going to be cut down. So, all right, well, that's very good. So we've completed all the questions. So I think if we could take five minutes to do follow ups for folks that are on the line, that would be good. Virginia?
Camille, you said you had three goals or priorities in your campaign, and one was affordable housing. What are the other two?
Right, increase affordable housing, bolster economic development and honor green space.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
Um, you mentioned when it came to housing, the, the economic idea of supply and demand. Chapel Hill has in progress and recently built a total of 8,000 apartment units. But supply and demand is not applying here. Prices are not going down. So what I think you need to take a look at is something called real estate investment trusts, and how they are driving all of this apartment building? Because these are basically investment vehicles. And by law, they have to have a certain rate of return. And if you invest in them, you can make a lot of money very fast. And this is what is happening, not just to Chapel Hill, but it's happening on a global scale. You have even pension funds investing in real estate investment trusts. And that's why you're getting all of these apartments. And unlike housing that is for sale, if you have apartments, you're getting income every month. You're getting a steady stream. So that's, that's some of behind what is happening here in Chapel Hill. It's an investment vehicle for people who have some money, who want to make more money.
Right, may I comment to that? When the supply and the demand, the supply that I'm talking about is not just one kind. And yes, the apartments can command that. And so we need to make it possible for development for sale units. And I was listening to the developer who is building on, who wants to build on Irwin Road, changed. Yes, thank you, changed it from apartments to townhomes. And then council member Stugman asked, Karen asked, well, what is the rate that you're looking to charge? And he tried to defer, and she said, you have to have a target, you always have a target when you're doing this. And the amount that he said, if I remember correctly, mid four hundreds to the six hundreds for a townhome, starting at 1,500, going up to 2,500. And I'm thinking, okay, I can see why he did that, because they were expecting money month after month, you know, until they wanted to sell that property. Now it is being sold that way. So yes, I understand, and this is where we have to be creative. What we want as far as, as housing, the types of housing, we need to figure out how to make it possible for those developers to do that.
Or, excuse me, just to underscore what Linda said, I, I, I read that recently, two of these big apartment buildings have been resold to other developers. Both Trilogy and Elegant have been resold in the last month or two.
Someone's making money.
Yeah, right.
I had a question, we didn't quite get into transportation much, Camille, and you mentioned the North South BRT. As being delayed, because that's true, it's been delayed and it's going to probably be five years out now. But could you comment a little bit about Chapel Hill's grown a lot? We're building a lot of new buildings, a lot of new people, a lot of new parking places, because they, they probably won't be able to ride our free bus system, because we're actually cutting routes and up, adding them. What, what, what's, what are your comments about what we can do about improving the transit situation?
Right, and let's be fair, the reason why we're cutting the trend, the routes is not because we want to. It's because we don't have the labor. We are experiencing labor shortage, just like everyone else. And it is causing freight harm in many industries and driving the costs up for things. But as far as transportation, what can we do? Again, we need to look at how do we make it possible for people to get around on, you know, in alternative measures than just their vehicles and jumping into their car to do this. I was fortunate to have, well, we all are, most of us, to have access to our bus system. Not everybody in Chapel Hill actually has access to the bus system, it'd be difficult for some. But it was very easy for me, it's very easy for me to walk where I need immediately. And that goes back to linking those greenways so that the alternative modes of transportation are safe.
Okay, all right, we've got some other folks on the line, let's see, anyone else would like a question?
We're north nine oh four, so.
Okay, we're just probably having one more minute then. Okay, all right. Let's see. All right, well, we really appreciate you joining us today, Camille, and we wish you a wonderful celebration, family celebration.
Thank you very much. I would like to close with, I, at the top of this, after I tried with my headphones, shared with you, because I like to be very transparent, I like to be frank and candid, that yes, I would not turn down money from developers outside of town. We have some developers who, I haven't accepted any yet, I haven't engaged in that. But it's very hard for me as one who does not have, you know, one, I'm not married, so I can't get those resources from a spouse, those unlimited resources, I can't give myself a personal loan. So I can't be as as closed off, restricted as that. I can be ethical. So if I think that there's a conflict of interest, that there is something that's coming up that I see in the next year, no, I would not. But if there are developers outside of this town that, with whom I've worked through Community Home Trust, who I have a relationship with, I would consider that. But I want to be frank with you that, that would be, it's ethically, how would I, would it be a conflict of interest for them? But I can't say across the board that I would not. I do try to be ethical, I do try to be transparent, and so I just wanted to close with that.
I appreciate, I appreciate the comment. It's, it's important to us, because in past elections, it does seem to play the role in, in behavior, actually. And in some cases, the money was pooled and was not reported until after people voted. So people didn't even have the information that this candidate had received these contributions. So also transparency issue.
Right, if you, if you notice, my finance, my treasurer is a, is retired corporate finance executive. He filed our paperwork very soon. He let it sit for a few days, but not long into July did we file ours. And we learned that we didn't have to file, we had already reported some information. But, and we're not, we're disclosing everyone who has given to us. So there are some that we could keep anonymous, we don't feel that we need to. We're very proud of those, and we would hope they're proud to support me. But we're very proud of those who choose to support this campaign.
Okay, thank you, Camille.
I really appreciate this time. Thank you, I will.